... meeting to order. Thank you for attending today's school committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 6th. Please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have an award ceremony that is going to be taking place over in the auditorium. So what we have done in the past is that we will make a motion to suspend the school committee meeting. And Madam Superintendent, how much time do you think we need to suspend for?
I would say at least an hour fifteen minutes.
So we will basically tell the public that we will suspend to approximately 8:15, 8:30. And we will then read adjourn and continue on with the rest of the school committee agenda. So can I have a motion to temporarily suspend this meeting until after the award ceremony?
Motion to temporarily suspend this meeting until after the award ceremony?
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you. We will adjourn and then we will return back between 8:15 and 8:30. Thank you. We will start. If you could all please join me and stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, everyone. Unfortunately, Mayor Carpenter could not be here, so my name is Tom Minicello. I'm the vice chair of the school committee. And we are all so proud. My other fellow school committee members are here, and this is a wonderful night for all of us because this is so special for all of you to be receiving these awards tonight. Brockton has many things to be proud of, and the chief among those is our youth. Those of you seated here tonight have excelled academically, artistically, athletically, and I congratulate you for your success. It's a night of celebration, and without further ado, I'd like to introduce the superintendent of schools, Kathleen Smith, who will join me, and the rest of the school committee in honoring you this evening. So Superintendent Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Minicello. This is a very busy but a wonderful time of year for all of us to celebrate all that goes on with our students in the Brockton Public Schools. And when we look out, it isn't often that we have some of our very youngest students to some of our very oldest students, even our most recent graduates, where we graduated close to 1,000 students on Saturday from Brockton High School, and we are very, very proud of those achievements. Being your superintendent has been more than an honor because I do get to see everything from the students that win the spelling bees, to the science fairs, to the History Day fairs, to the athletics, to the arts, to the drama, to the music, and on and on, the accolades that you receive with your talents and your special skills in the Brockton Public Schools. And there are so many people to thank. I want to thank our students for all of their hard work, all of the time they put in the studying, the practice, that made a difference, and that's why you're sitting here today. To all of the parents, to the grandparents, to the family members that supported your students through projects, through listening, through doing those spelling words on a Thursday night, preparing for your spelling test on a Friday from the time they were very little, to spending time reading, to throwing a ball, to speaking with your students and giving them opportunities for art classes and music classes, and all the wonderful things you do. And when I look out there to those teachers in the classroom that believe in your children, they believe in them from the time they're very little till we talk about those graduates that walked across that field on Saturday. They're there for you as good listeners, they're there for guidance, and they are truly the people that you will remember for a lifetime that supported you and brought you to this position. So thank you to everybody in our community for coming together and honoring our wonderful students. I also want to give a quick shout-out to our administrative assistants, our communication director, and so many of you that spent hours preparing certificates and getting this ready. And last but not least, I want to thank, and I want you to give a round of applause, to your school committee, who represents you not just on a Tuesday night during very lengthy school committee meetings, but are out there advocating for you, they're your representative, and they make sure that we are a city where education excellence is one of the most important things we do for our children. So please thank them. So the first group of awards tonight is the math and science awards for grades six through eight. They will be presented by Joan Farrington, our coordinator of math and science, grades six through eight. And I want you to please hold your applause until the last student in each category has received their award. And please be sure to turn off your cell phones, and let's all enjoy this wonderful evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith, and members of the school committee. It gives me great pleasure to be here tonight to present these awards to the math and science students, and it's great to see so many parents here supporting their students in all their academic endeavors. So I think if we could have the students come over and start lining up over here, please, by row. The group that I'm going to call up first are the winners of the New England Math League Competition. These students take a test somewhere around March, and they take a test that is composed of 35 questions that they have to complete in about 30 minutes. They're not easy math questions, they're not just regular computation, they're ones where students really have to think and understand the math. This year, we've had many of our students do an excellent job on these tests, and our first group is the group from Plough. It's a grade six group, and their team consisting of five members, sometimes we have six because we have ties, but we had a total score of 111 points from these students. The members of that team are Nagazi Nuosi, please come up, Ali John Baptiste. If you could just wait until we finish each grade level, I'd appreciate that, thank you. Mackenzie Quinn. Ezekiel Lemur. And Daniel Martins. That's the grade six team from Plough. Great job. This year, the grade seven winners, we had a team win first place, second place, and third place in Barnstable and Plymouth Counties. The grade seven first-place team from Plough, in addition to being the highest scoring in Plymouth Counties, they also had the top scorers individually, so I will read those names as well when the students come up. So in the grade seven team from Plough, we have Jacob Hayden, an individual score of 29 overall. Excellent job, Jacob. Next, we have Alyssa Morales, individual score of 29 points. Again, excellent job. Next, we have Alexis Waugh, third-place overall score of 25 points. Vinnie Nguyen, also 25 points as a high scorer. And our last member of that team is Madison Henry. Thank you very much. The second-place grade seven team comes from Ashfield with a total score of 110 points. The first member is Christian Nichols. Jelani DeJesus. Madeline Miller. Ryan Wallen. And Catherine Green. That's the Ashfield team with 110 points overall. And we also had the third-place team from Brockton this year. They came from East Middle School with a total score of 104 points. We have Brandon Honrato. Savannah Fontz. Olivia Scott-Andrade. Just in time. Jaylene Gomes. Isaac Miller. And Kylie Ruckston. Great job with our seventh-grade teams. The final New England Math League winners are from grade eight. We had the second-place team from Plough Academy with a total score of 91 points, so I think you can see with these point values, the eighth-grade test was a lot more difficult. So we have, in that team from Plough, Kimberly Garcia. Michael Johnson. Calvin Vo. Sadie Ripple. And our final grade eight team from North Middle School is the third-place team in Barnstable and Plymouth Counties. The members of that team are Gianni Nunes Amato. Amis Darius. Joshua Vega. Kay Lane Souza Silva. And Jacob Teo. And when I say these names, I remember several of these from last year and the year before. Many of them won awards last year in grade seven and the prior year in grade six. Excellent job in the grade eight group. The next group of awards is the science awards, are the science awards, students who have attended multiple science fairs throughout the school year. They began creating their projects or deciding on their projects back in November probably. They did some research, decided what they were going to do their projects on, had a science fair at their buildings first, then they went to the city fair in, I think it was the end of March. They moved on to the regional fair in April, and finally concluded last Saturday at the state science fair. So we have several winners on that as well. The first students I'm going to call up received honorable mention at the regional science fair. First, we have Margaret La Pointe from Ashfield with her project on the effect of trumpet quality and proper maintenance on beginning players. Next, Ellen Rustamayan from Plough. Her project was on cellphone microscope. Next is Angeli Texera and Sadie Ripple from Plough with their project on the Ripple Project, and they also received honorable mention at the state science fair. Nice job, girls. Caitlin Donovan and Eliani Abraham from Plough on acid rain. Jason Gillis Jr. from Plough on reducing the spread of infectious diseases on airplanes, something we all might want to look into. He also received honorable mention at the state science fair. Great job, Jason. Ally Winkler from Plough, the Science of Sound, also received honorable mention at the state science fair. Great job, Ally. Evelyn Murphy and Gabriela Florio from West Middle School with the project Different The next student who received a third place at the regional science fair, I don't think she's here tonight, Sophia Howe from Plough with her project on protecting marble. And our final science fair winner, Farzana Haig, who received honorable mention at the state science fair. She's from Plough Academy, and her project was the effect of drainage systems. So congratulations to all these students. They all did a wonderful job. And now it is my privilege to introduce Dr. Ethan Kansell, who will present the awards for students who achieved perfect scores on the MCAS and Park assessments. How about that?
Thank you for turning out, for recognizing our students. I want to thank the mayor, our superintendent, Kathy Smith, and our school committee for honoring our students for accomplishing something that's really, really special. I just want to pause for a minute so I can underscore how rare a perfect score on MCAS or PARK is. There are literally hundreds of thousands of students across the state who take the test. A very tiny percentage, a very tiny percentage get a perfect score. The students in Brockton tonight are being recognized for receiving a perfect score either in ELA, or math, or science, and in a couple cases, more than one subject. So without further ado, please hold your applause, but let's recognize the following students for the perfect score in English Language Arts. Starting off in grade three, Jada Ivora. This was for last year's PARK scores. Devonee Scott was not able to be here. Ella Silverman wasn't able to be here. Jane Liu wasn't able to be here. Melody Rivas wasn't able to be here, but Hannah Zuckerman is here. Ronique Brown. Katerina Lutz. Leila Motamed. Zyra Piers. Olivia Scott-Andrade. Sophia Howe. Rachel Moyes. Heather Corto. Oh yes, Emily Ta, come on up. All right, so Joshua Lovering. Stacy Paulina Mendonka. Genevieve Noe. Max Tobin. And Rick Sun Zhang. Now representing the math. We have Aiden Hughes. You don't have to run, Aiden, you'll get it. Michael Lasevita. Xavier Rendon. Anna Strupinus. Eileen Zhang. Inobong Anoko. Elizabeth Bernadin. Andy Diaz Perez. Hannah Camara. Kylie Lakin. Vivian Louo. Chrysander Perizon. Francis Perdal. Kiara Shields. Adriano Correa. Brady Witt. Alex Dos Santos. Julia Drukas. Vinnie Hyun. Renee Long. Alexis Waugh. Daniel White. So those students had perfect scores in math. And so now the students with perfect scores in science. We have Ashley Fan. Douglas Van Tran. And Calvin Vuong. Now, I want to point out the next student, Owen Kirchak. He had a perfect score in science and ELA. We had an exceptionally strong third-grade class last year. This year is fourth grade. We had three students who had a perfect score in the ELA and the math. Now, there might be a little confusion about this. They took PARK, and I'm saying that they had a perfect MCAS score. The state converted the scores for us so that we could compare them. These are the scores they would have achieved had they taken MCAS, which although it was the hardest test in all the states, the PARK test was even harder. So anyhow, without further ado, we have perfect score in ELA and math, Lauren Holland. Franklin Chen. So now it is with my very great pleasure that I introduce Dr. Julian Andrade will be handing out the next awards.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Each spring, students in grades three to eight in all Brockton Public Schools, private schools, and parochial schools square off in the Little Red Schoolhouse Association Annual Spelling Bee. Each contestant has won a grade-wide spelling bee to represent their school, and the winners of that citywide bee are awarded prizes from local sponsors. We are pleased with the excellent performance of our young spellers this year. I am happy to announce the first-place winners of each grade's spelling competition. Here are the 2017 Elementary Citywide Spelling Bee winners. Grade three, first place, Ailish Lovell, Brookfield School. Grade four, first place, Rowanah Hadi, Trinity Catholic Academy. Grade five, first place, Uldar Fernandez Huntington School. And now, it's my privilege to introduce Eileen McQuade, ELA and Social Studies Coordinator, who will present the awards for the Little Red Schoolhouse Spelling Bee and National History Day Awards for middle school.
Thank you, Dr. Andrade. This year, the spelling bee was a lot of fun, and I would like to introduce the first-place winner for grade six. And before I do, I just want you to know that the grade six kids went through 74 words before we finally crowned a winner. So the winner for the grade six spelling bee is Ally John Baptiste Jr. Ally's from Plough Academy. Our grade seven winner from Plough Academy is Isabella McNutt. And our grade eight winner from West Middle School is Evelyn Murphy. The next awards are for National History Day. National History Day is a unique opportunity for our students to showcase their historical and research skills in their schools, in their region, at the state, and the national levels. We are so proud of Brockton Middle School students who represented their city so well. I'd like to thank the teachers who participated and worked so hard to make the program such a great success, and who have nurtured these students in their growing abilities. It's my pleasure to present to you the distinguished junior winners of the Regional National History Day Competition 2017. First place for junior individual website category with the project 1989 Protest at Tiananmen Square from West Middle School is Evelyn Murphy. Second place for the junior group website, The Flame of Resistance from Plough Academy, Abigail Schultz and Shay McCauley. Third place for the junior group website, the subject is Alice Paul from West Middle School, Jasmine Lee. Regina Chu. Nia Alves. And Paige Parma. Honorable mention for the junior group website category, and the subject was Deborah Sampson Taking a Bullet for Women's Rights from Plough Academy, Nick Blanchard, Robert Latoura Torres, Ryan Sanon, and Kenneth Young. Second place for junior individual performance, the subject was Neville Chamberlain's Appeasement of Adolf Hitler, and this person's from West Middle School, it's Gabriela Florio. Second place for the junior individual performance, A Stand Against Slavery, A Tale of Two Spies from Plough Academy, Ally Winkler and Nicole Dungberry. Honorable mention, junior individual exhibit, Turning Tides, West Middle School, Carolyn Second place, junior group exhibit, The Black Panthers from Plough Academy, Corinne First place for junior individual documentary, Frederick Douglass from Plough Academy, Georgina Second place, junior individual documentary, Sophie Scholl, A Stand Against Hitler, West Middle School, Kate Remy. First place, junior group documentary, French Revolution, West Middle School, Rakim Johnson, Kyle Gildner, Kenny Olivera, and Cassidy Dickinson. And third place, junior group documentary, The War on Poverty. The War on Poverty, from West Middle School, Gianna DeVoe, Zoe McDonald, Emma Riordan, and Alyssa Kerrigan. But the junior division is not done yet. This year, the middle schools have a lot to crow about concerning National History Day. Six of our students were winners at the state competition, and they will be competing at the national level in Washington DC next week. This is an unprecedented number of students representing Brockton nationally, and we couldn't be prouder. Please join me in recognizing these amazing young history scholars. At the state level, they won second place in the junior division for group exhibits. The title was The Black Panthers and Their Stand for Justice. Corinne Bellevue, Chiniere Okoreke, and Audrey Bram. They're from Pluff Academy. So great. And their teacher is Matt Kowalik, who's worked really hard for them. We're so proud of them. Good luck next week, you guys. Next in the junior division for group performances. This group won second place for their performance called A Stand Against Slavery: A Tale of Two Spies. They're from Pluff Academy. Their teacher is Matt Kowalik. And they are Ally Winkler and Nicole Dunbarry. Good luck next week. And the junior division, Individual Documentary. This young lady won second place for her documentary, Sophie Scholl: A Stand Against Hitler. She's from West Middle School, and her teacher is Matt Campbell. And her name is Kate Remy. We're so proud of all of them, and we know that they're going to make us really proud in DC next week. So it is now my pleasure to introduce Dr. Emily Flores, Social Studies Department Head for Grades Nine through Twelve, to announce the winners of the senior division of National History Day.
Good evening, everyone. Each year, thousands of students across the country take part in National History Day, which challenges students to become experts in a historical topic of their choice. Students in Grades Seven through Twelve, as you've just seen, competed in the paper, performance, documentary, website, and exhibit categories, sharing their knowledge and analysis of historical events before a panel of educators who judged their presentations' knowledge and research abilities. These year's winners were Loving vs. Virginia, Alicia Judy; Sojourner Truth: Taking a Stand Against Captivity, Mariah Brown; The Greensboro Four, Adande Bienaymi, Milari Teo Nahera; Ruth B. Ginsberg, Nicole Mejia, Tori Viola Larfree; The Black Panthers, Jalina Roachford, Sabrina Sepulveda, Abigail Simon; Individual Websites, Astor Place Riots, Chiniere Okoro; Toussaint Louverture, Tanisha Jean; Hitler: Standing Up for the Motherland, Eddie Cronin; Jesse Owens, Alicia Oviedo; Group Websites, Mohamed Ali, Joshua Miranda, Daniel Andrade, Margarita Martins; Protesting Vietnam, Yuri de Silva, Jason De Cruz, Kevin Souza; Cuban Embargo, JFK to Obama, Tyler Calley, Diego Ramos Pierre; Individual Documentaries, John Copley's Artistic Fight Against the British, John Getundu; And Group Documentaries, Die Escobar Files, Steve Murphy Takes a Stand, Maite Conde, Jada Vitell, Stephanie Alves, Sasha Scarpate; Sidney Parier, Gabriella Edwards, Alsara Francois; Hugh Thompson and the Millai Massacre, Nyla Montero, Zany de Manche Silva. Congratulations, ladies. Now, please welcome Foreign Language Department Head, Rachel Umbriana, who will present the National Latin Awards.
Good evening. Latin students at North, South, and West Middle Schools, as well as Brockton High School, participated this year in the National Latin Exam. This exam is given each March to approximately one hundred and forty-eight thousand students worldwide. Students from all fifty states participate, as well as thirteen foreign countries. This year, Brockton Latin students participated in the exam in five different levels. I would like to take the opportunity to thank the students for their participation in the exam and to thank the teachers for all their hard work to prepare our students to succeed. The Foreign Language Department is very proud of each of you. From Brockton High School, we have Catherine Healy, Latin I, magna cum laude. Dale Quimby, Latin III, magna cum laude. From North Middle School, we have Samira Coban, magna cum laude; Amos Darius, gold summa cum laude; Jessica Gross, magna cum laude; Isaiah Jean Pierre, magna cum laude; Diana Moreno, magna cum laude; Kayla Powell-Cobs, magna cum laude; And Joshua Vega, silver maxima cum laude. From South Middle School, Evelyn Canavan, magna cum laude; Bryce Collymore, cum laude; Shane Crowe, cum laude; Michaela Cunha, magna cum laude; John Dodona III, magna cum laude; Stephanie DePina, cum laude; Vladneira DePina, gold summa cum laude; Brady Harkins, gold summa cum laude; Scott Homer, silver maxima cum laude; Christina Nugent, magna cum laude; And Naomi Payne, magna cum laude. From West Middle School, we have Angel de Jesus, cum laude; Vanessa Garcia, silver maxima cum laude; Faduma Guled, magna cum laude; Olajumobi Alori, silver maxima cum laude; Daniel Onekya, gold summa cum laude; Alexander Provenzano, magna cum laude; Anthony Timis Alves, silver maxima cum laude. And now I give you Music Director Vincent Macrina, who will present the All-State Music Festival Awards and two special awards for students who earned a place in the National Choral Directors Association's National Honor Chair.
Good evening. Each year, the Massachusetts Music Educators Association All-State Music Conference held in Boston during the month of March. The All-State Music Conference showcases by auditions the best high school musicians throughout the state. This year, the following students were selected to represent Brockton High School with the following ensembles. Chorus, Olivia Armory, McCauley Burse, Haley Deltano, Greg Duong, Jade Etienne, Angela Fraises, Jason Laurent, John Polvery, and Aaron Smith. This was planned. Chosen to perform with the All-State Band, Brianna Munus, Christopher Morales, and with the All-State Jazz Ensemble, Ryan Shaw. And we're also very proud of two outstanding students chosen to perform with the American Choral Directors Association National Honor Choir, Michelle Garcia, and Karina Katsiopoulos. And now I give you Art Director Sarah Richards, who will present the Arts Award.
Good evening. Five Brockton High School student artists exhibited works in the Fifth Annual University of Massachusetts Dartmouth College of Visual and Performing Arts Merging Young Artists 2017 Invitational Exhibition. This exhibition recognizes the exceptional merit of high school art students from thirty-four high schools, thirty-four high school art programs in Massachusetts. Valerie Dehonet, Nicole Gordon, Gabriella Serrano. Hector Hernandez and Samantha Mayard won the overall Best in Show Dean's Award. We're very proud to have these five Brockton High School students represent our art program. Every year, the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild holds annual scholarship auditions for acting and set design. This year, Brockton High School senior Anna Coates won an honorable mention for her set design concept for the play No Exit. Marshall Delapi, also a Brockton High School senior, won first place with his monologue for Fences by August Wilson. The National Television Academy, a professional service organization dedicated to the advancement of the arts and science of television. Each year, they nominate students for Emmys in a multitude of categories. This year, Shaylees Jefferson, a Brockton High School senior, was nominated in the High School Public Affairs Community Service category for her film For Food Homeless Project. Shaylees Jefferson. And the Scholastic Art Awards. The Scholastic Art Awards are the nation's longest-running, most prestigious, and recognized program for creative teens in Grades Seven through Twelve. I'm proud to announce that Sander Cabral of North Middle School not only won a state gold key, but went on to win a national gold key for his self-portrait. And now I present to you Lieutenant Colonel Richard Clark to present the JRTC Awards. Thank you.
Good evening. We would like to recognize our top four cadets who have recently been selected as the cadet leaders for our Junior RTC program for the remainder of this year and next. Junior RTC is a character and leadership development program. It differs from most programs in the sense that cadet involvement is critical to its success. As such, our cadets are continually presented with leadership opportunities in which they can develop their interpersonal, problem-solving, decision-making, and communicative skills while simultaneously learning something about their own character. As the key leaders, these four will be given the enormous opportunity of leading and managing the program's administrative, operational, and logistical actions necessary to support school and community events. Not an easy feat, since on average, we have about two-hundred-and-twenty-plus kids in the program for each semester. So, without further ado, their rank and positions, names are as follows. Cole Wyman, the Cadet Lieutenant Colonel and New Battalion Commander. You'll be seeing him again on the athletic side. Next person. Elia Andre Davora, Cadet Major and New Battalion Executive Officer. Next, we have Anthony Morales, Cadet Major and New Battalion Operations Officer. Finally, we have Joaquim Pyris DeAndrade, commonly referred to as Jack. He's our Cadet Command Sergeant Major and New Battalion Command Sergeant Major. Good job. May I now introduce our Athletic Director, Mr. Kevin Kairo, who will present the All-Scholastic Athletic Awards.
Good evening. It is my honor to present to you the outstanding student athletes here at Brockton High School. These young women and men have demonstrated their skill on the playing field, but also scholastic excellence in their classrooms. These athletes have made us proud to be called the City of Champions, and I commend each of them. The following student athletes have earned all-scholastic honors either from the Brockton Enterprise or the Boston Globe. In our fall season in football, Kingsley Ijoseju Dyke, Enterprise All-Scholastic, Kay Sean Brown, Enterprise All-Scholastic, Shawn King Jr., Enterprise All-Scholastic, and Pride Favors, Enterprise All-Scholastic Football. Boys Soccer, Rilton Cavallo, Cristiano Martins, Lucas Spinola. All right, we finally have somebody to come up. Boys Cross Country, Christopher McCaffrey, who you'll be seeing again. Nathan Elshamey in golf. Girls Cross Country, Sancha Alexis. Girls Volleyball, Dakenzi Marcellus and Gabriella Serrano. Transitioning into our winter season. It kind of feels like it out there now. For Boys Basketball, Damaje Taylor and Precious Oko. No show. Next girl I'd like to call up is an Enterprise All-Scholastic, but she also scored her thousandth career point here at Brockton High, Jalani Jackson. Also representing our girls basketball team, Alexandra Gianaros, Annalisa Fernandez, and Jade Went. Ice Hockey, Zach Sylvia not here. Boys Indoor Track, Christopher McCaffrey. And the other members of the team, I don't believe, are here. But Christopher was part of a team that qualified for the National New Balance Invitational down in New York City. And he will be going off to Stonehill College next year. So Chris, great season. Okay, the other members of that track team, Rudiano Ramos, Josué Dos Santos, Cedric Soufrant, and Hanson Bastia. In Girls Indoor Track, and I see her coming up here, Sarah Remy was Enterprise All-Scholastic, but also Division One State High Jump Champion. And Marie Elise is not here. She was also a member of our girls indoor track. She was also a member of our Girls Indoor Track. Okay, we had quite a few members of our Wrestling Team make All-Scholastic, and they are Caleb Lamar. Cole Wyman, who is the only person in Brockton High School history to be the two-time All-State Wrestling Champ, and we're hoping for a three-peat next year. Connor Gagny. Dalton Rodrick. And Devin Nguyen. And last but not least, representative of our Swim Team, Caroline Golding, Enterprise All-Scholastic. Okay, as far as our spring season goes, they just ended last week, and the All-Star nominations will not take place until June thirteenth. Three of our teams, the Baseball, Boys Tennis, and Boys Volleyball Team, all qualified for the state tournament, and several of our Track and Field Athletes qualified for the All-State Track meet at Bridgewater State. So, we won't have those until later on this summer, so look for the papers. But a big thank you to our students, coaches, parents, administration, and community for supporting our athletes throughout the year. We greatly appreciate all your support and can't wait to see you in the fall. Thank you.
Okay, everyone, well, thank you for attending. We, everyone here on stage is so very proud of everyone that received awards. Some of our students, as you could see, received multiple awards and are so talented. I'd like to thank all the parents and friends and relatives for attending, and I'm sure that you are as proud of all of your students out here as we are. So, thank you so much. Have a safe night and try to stay dry. Thanks again. Bye-bye.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We will, can we have a motion to recommence the School Committee meeting from our adjournment?
Motion to recommence. Please.
Second? Okay, all in favor? Great. All right, thank you for attending tonight's meeting. We had the privilege of having Award Night over in the auditorium, so we temporarily suspended. And it was, again, another nice night, because you see how many students are really high achievers in all aspects of, of all aspects of what the school system has to offer in terms of academics, the arts, and sports. So, it's really a special evening. So, I'd like to just congratulate all those students and their families. The next item that we have on our agenda is the Hearing of Visitors. No one has signed in this evening, so we can move onward. The third item that we address is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is the bundling of routine matters with respect to the School Committee, and at this time, there's an opportunity for any member to remove a particular item for further discussion and consideration. So, I would ask the School Committee if anyone would like to remove any items in the Consent Agenda. Okay, seeing none. Can I have a motion from someone to approve the items within the Consent Agenda? A through M? Okay, wonderful. Second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Wonderful. Next item on the agenda is Communication and the Report of the Superintendent of Schools. Superintendent Smith, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And Mr. Minicello, you just mentioned that we had many students from our elementary schools, to our middle schools, to our high schools, receiving awards tonight in every area. From our science fairs to our National History Day, our athletes, our art awards, our music awards, our JRTC, our perfect scores on MCAS Park exams. It is just, I think, rewarding to every one of us here to understand why we continue to do what we do, is to advocate to make sure our kids have every opportunity and they continue to amaze us with everything that they achieve. So, congratulations to all those students and those families for our end-of-the-year awards ceremony. And I mentioned in there, and I want to mention here, I'm looking out at our interns, who are coming to quickly the end of their internship. They have truly been an amazing group. They've been at so many things, and helping out tonight is yeoman's work. It's a lot to put that together. I want to thank our Communications Director, Michelle Bolton, for working, you know, with our team and making this a wonderful night for everybody. So, thank you very much. Going into our budget, as I told everybody at previous meetings, we are in a phase right now of starting to build back. So, the build-back phase is to start to wait for the possibility of additional monies as our state budget is finalized. We'll continue to build that. I believe our next Finance Committee meeting will be before our School Committee, excuse me, we don't have School Committee, the thirteenth. It will be our Finance Committee meeting next week. I know a couple of you were asking about that. At that point, we hope to have some additional funds, some that you put away. We continue to look for those funds as we're able to build our budget. And this is where, again, our priority, or your priority, is to bring back our teaching positions as quickly as we can to support our classrooms. I will mention to everybody that we do have on Friday evening, and yes, it is Friday evening at this point, our Budget Hearing before the City Council, which is a yearly event that we go through to discuss our budgets. One of the things that we're talking about this year, we are the eleventh on the agenda. It's usually quite a lengthy presentation, and I just want to talk a little bit about what the presentation will be this year. The presentation will start out with a handout to what we call the State of the Schools. So, that is an update for them of every one of our operations. It's some of the challenges that they face, some of the achievements that they've had, but it really does give them an overall picture of the schools, and we do this every year. We've done this at least the past three years. We also will have an overview of what a sixteen-million-dollar deficit looks like and how we got there. We'll talk about loss of positions, and when I talk about loss of positions, we will make sure that they understand loud and clear, school by school, the positions that we will do without at this point in time next year. We'll talk about programs, the loss of programs, and some of them, when you look at our middle schools with all of the additional programs that we try to have for kids in this community. Because before we start to talk about other funds in the community for other operations, if you're not making sure that your children are not receiving an excellent education and an opportunity for a safe space after school with caring adults, which is our promise, under America's promise and our promise as a city, to make sure we continue to provide these opportunities. So, I think it'll be glaring when we start to talk about program-wise, the things that we're missing. I'll also talk about advocacy, and I am asking everyone out there that cares about education in Brockton. What I say to everybody is you demand educational excellence of us, which is why I started out by talking about not only our students' successes, but we support our struggling students. We support those students that need an alternative education, to the point that we had a thousand graduates on the field last Saturday at Brockton High School. And that is the job that we need to do for the children in this city. So, we had our rally last week, I'll talk a little bit about that, but this is our, this year, not just Brockton Kids Count, it's Save Our Schools, Brockton Kids Count. And we're asking everybody, we're asking our teachers, we're asking our support staff, we're asking our parents and our community members to join us on Friday evening at quarter of six at the City Hall Plaza, believe it or not, the weather looks pretty good, to come out for about forty-five minutes as our City Council members are entering the chamber. And to make sure that they understand, all our elected officials understand, that unless we provide an appropriate education for our students in this city, the city as a whole will suffer. So, once again, I'm asking everybody to come out, that is the ninth of June, and that is quarter of six on Friday evening for about forty-five minutes. If you can give up forty-five minutes of your time, I think it'll be time well spent. As far as this evening, we also had what we called, and I was so excited to finally have a Facility Master Plan update. So, you heard the company, Arrowhead, Arrowhead, is that correct? Arrow Street, thank you. Arrow Street present to us this evening, they have been working with us since last February, and I'd like to ask Deputy Superintendent Thomas to come up and just talk to us about what lies ahead, some of the work that has been done, so that we can share with the public what is happening, looking at the, all of our school buildings in the district.
As they presented to you tonight, they've had meetings with principals, they've visited our schools. This is part of the group that is looking at both the city buildings and the schools. As you know, the City Council voted to accept the bid by this company back probably in March to start their work, might have been a little bit earlier than that, maybe back in January, to do a facilities master plan for the entire city, all city buildings, including schools. And this is something that the Superintendent has been asking for when she took office. So, it's something that's long overdue and will help us with our applications to the MSBA when we move forward on either putting in for renovations for older schools or looking into building newer schools. You really need to have this Facilities Master Plan. The MSBA wants you to submit that with what they call Statement of Interests, when you ask them to either build a school or renovate a school. So, so they've obviously evaluate your current buildings to see where you are, if you need more space, if buildings need to either be renovated, if they need to be added to. Obviously, we know that the main focus of this group is Brockton High School, now forty-five years old, and, you know, is held up very well, but is in need of renovation and upgrading and of the infrastructure of the school. So, it's a big task, but they've, I actually think that they've been off on a really good start. They've, they've met with us at Central, they've met with principals, they've put together some really good focus groups of teachers, administrators, to really see what they need in the day-to-day operations of schools and classrooms. So, they have really put the focus on the teacher and what's needed in the, at the, you know, the classroom level as far as the learning environment. So, I think so far, they've done a really nice job, and I'm looking forward to the final product. They are planning on having meetings with the community in the fall. They'll be planning those with us. We want them to meet, probably do the old four compass schools, have meetings on each side of the city. So, it gives everybody an opportunity to come in and hear their presentation, also give their input on, you know, what they expect from our schools and how they can more, you know, better serve the community. So, I know you asked them a lot of questions, but I can answer any of that that you want to ask.
It really brought to light the deficiencies, you know, the geographic issues and areas of increased population that need to be thinned out, basically. And, you know, brought to light the, you know, the flaws, no, you know, no blame to anyone, but just the flaws of overcrowding that we need to deal with. And it certainly puts in motion the first steps, you know, which are solid steps, you know, that need to be addressed in order to come up with a long-term solution. You know, I think their priorities, based on the feedback from people that provided input, were right on point. The high school being certainly a priority. It's, as we all know, the high school is really one of the most used buildings in the city. It's constantly being used for something. So, you know, it's basically a nineteen-seventies building that needs some TLC and updating, and, you know, that's certainly one point that needs to be made. And, you know, certainly the overcrowding of certain buildings and the lack of square footage and space for kids to spread their wings and specialty rooms and areas in order to provide students with the needs that other communities are able to provide based on, you know, their more, more updated facilities. Now, we do have, you know, we're lucky to have a few handful of new schools, and those are beautiful buildings, and those are beautiful schools, but we certainly go from one end of the gamut to the other. I mean, so, it's a good first step, and I was very impressed with the competency of the consultants. They're excellent, and I think many of us were here. I think we heard loud and clear and saw for ourselves points of interest and sort of internal contention that exists in the system. So, you know, we will obviously take this as a first step and move forward to improve the district in a long-term fashion. Mr. DiAgostino.
Deputy Superintendent Thomas, you and I have talked about this quite a bit, about how these kinds of things get paid for and all of that, and I'm just thinking, maybe for the benefit of someone who might watch, be watching this meeting and wondering, okay, you have a sixteen-million-dollar deficit, we've got teachers laid off, how do we pay, how are we possibly paying for renovations, potentially? How are we even considering this? If you can kind of, just for the benefit of anyone who may not know, how that kind of stuff gets paid for?
It's all, it's called the capital money. Capital repair money has to come out of the city's budget. It cannot come out of Chapter Seventy spending. And the good thing about Brockton is we do get eighty percent reimbursement from the MSBA, so they pay eighty percent of the bill. And they've done that over, you know, Mr. Sullivan goes back to seven years ago with Mr. Minicello, and again, this, about two years ago, this committee approved the latest round. So, we've, we've had now thirteen projects in my seven years of, with the MSBA of putting, I mean, you know, back in two thousand and ten, when I came into this job, we had the Raymond and Davis were, they were threatened into close both of those buildings at the time. There, there was water coming in everywhere. We had the North Auditorium, which the roof collapsed and had to be shut down. So, we, we had buildings in pretty bad shape then, and over the last seven years, the MSBA has taken on, has given us thirteen new roofs, new windows, boilers, in, you know, fourteen different buildings. So, and again, at eighty percent reimbursement, supported by the School Committee, but then again, by the city. And the city has been able to take that out of their local budget for capital repair. The first project, the city, it was, it cost the city thirteen million. This last project is, Al, it was about three million? The latest cost?
About three million.
Three million. So, the city over the last seven years has put in about sixteen million of their own money to do all these renovations. So, moving forward, again, it, it's up to the city, the taxpayers, to foot the twenty percent of the bill that the MSBA expects you to pay. And that has to be done through a series of votes. The MSBA has to, you say you put in for renovation of Brockton High. So, first, you have to go forward with an agreement to do a feasibility study, and that's an architect that comes in and evaluates the school, evaluates what has to be done, so you have to pay that, and that's eighty percent reimbursement. And then they come back with a price tag and say it's going to cost you so many million to renovate the school, and then you go back again and take another vote whether the city will support that or not. But it does come out of city capital repair money and capital funds. It cannot come out of Chapter Seventy.
Great. Thanks.
Projects go on all around us. You know, Stoughton is one of the newer ones, building a new high school. I believe Holbrook will finish within the past year, or the next year. West Bridgewater finished about a year or two ago. So, Abington, right, is in the process of building. So, you look at these, and towns are committing, and I thought it was interesting, when I looked at the date that they had down there of the so-called Keith Center, now, that's your old Brockton High School. It had a date of nineteen sixteen. We know we opened this building up in nineteen seventy. So, that had a life of fifty-four years as Brockton High School downtown. When you look at where we're at right now with this school, it opened up in nineteen seventy, we are at year forty-seven. And you can bet the planning to build a new high school starts a number of years, you know, before you're able to open up a new school. So, just looking at that, to me, you know, we are certainly where we need to be to be having these discussions about Brockton High. And I think we know we have a fabulous footprint here, and one of the things that we've been talking about with this group, and certainly before they came on board, is the possibility of adding on a large stem wing and starting to renovate each of these buildings, you know, over a certain period of time, so you then have a state-of-the-art high school. So, there's many options for us, but as Mr. Thomas said, I, for one, and I know many people join me, I'm thrilled that the city has put forward the money to do this facility master planning. I'm pleased in the fall, we'll start to get some community input as to what do the grade level spans look like. You heard some of the recommendations from administrators, teachers, principals, who were on board during the months of February. were on board during the months of February, March, April, to start to talk about this facility master plan. So we'll all have an opportunity to weigh in and to decide what we want to provide for our children in the future.
Mr. Sullivan?
That group, Arrow had mentioned more than once, the pre-K, we're kind of missing the boat on it. Do you, I don't know if you were here the whole time.
Yeah, no, I listened to that part, and that's, that's important because if we, as we start to look at changing the, the date for the kindergarten students, their start date, that will leave a lot of four-year-olds, you know, that would need to be into pre-K programs. So we would need classroom space for those kids. So that's something that, when, when we met with the group, with the superintendent, she made it clear that we were looking at rolling back the, the start date for kindergarten students. And if that happens, we should have places for these kids that wouldn't make the date, and they'd be pre-K, where can we, where can we house them? So we would be looking for classroom space. So we told them that would be a priority as part of their master plan, to find us some classrooms that, so we can expand the pre-K program.
So this is the facility master plan that we worked on in the last committee, because I remember when the superintendent came on, we had a facility master plan.
We were talking about it at the time.
Okay.
And now that the city's actually put forward the money to bring this first.
Yeah, the, yeah, the city had to put out a bid, and at the time, the city made a decision that, you know, they have, obviously, their police station, their fire stations are not in the best shape. So the mayor thought it was best to put forward a master plan that not only covered the schools, but also covered all the city buildings. So they put a bid out to hire a facilities master plan firm that does all the planning, and you met, you know, obviously, you met them tonight. And that was the, Arrow Street was the company that won the bid, and again, I think they started back in January. And this is the group, they have another group that, that is working on the city buildings. This is the group that has been working with the schools, with us in the schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And I think what I'll do is jump into the discussion about this past week. We did have, on June 1st, the Commissioner of Early Childhood, Commissioner Tom Weber, come to our district. We're very pleased to host him, and the conversation very much was about a planning grant that we had gotten, a PEG grant, a preschool expansion grant, also a planning grant for our community for preschool. So we shared with him what we had shared with you at the retreat in January. We talked about the objectives for preschoolers and the objectives for kindergarteners that are very different. We talked about we are only probably three in the state that have a December 31 cutoff. So we told him we're very much studying it. Right now, we're looking at the results at the end of the year. When you talk about retentions or children that are struggling, you know, many times, this is the population that we're talking about. So the goal of that conversation was some of the frustration on our part, that there are pilot programs out there for places like Boston, Springfield, Worcester, who, again, are numbers one, two, three in size in the state. Brockton is number four. So we had an excellent conversation with the commissioner. I think he was very impressed with the work of June Saban McGuire's team in our teaching and learning and our kindergarteners, and the work we've done on looking at the preschool objectives, and to Laurie Silver and Joni Block, who are heading up, working with the community to take a look at what we have in the community, and start to have conversation about rolling back that kindergarten age and talking about bringing on preschool programs. So I'm very hopeful that as grants come up, there were actually, there was money right now in the state budget. And again, we'll wait to see when the budget is completed, probably towards the end of June, what kind of opportunities there may be for us there. And I'd like to invite up our principal Natalie Poehl from the George School. She's going to talk to you this evening about uniforms, school uniforms. And I think this comes at the right time. Last week, we had conversations, lengthy conversations about dress code. And when it becomes, you know, warm weather, not that we have that right now, but, you know, warm weather, that's usually when the dress code comes into play many times. So again, I'm really pleased to have her here, and I want to remind everybody that back, oh my goodness, probably at least five or six years ago, the Huntington School was the first school to bring on uniforms. It has been a success. I've talked to parents, they're very pleased. When you go to the Huntington, the kids are all wearing not only the uniforms, but their logo shirts. They have many different options. Two years ago, I believe, we went with the Raymond School during their expansion grant. They were able to also bring uniforms onboard with their red shirts and their logo and their khakis. And I think the George School, at this point, wants to present to you an option for the George School principal.
All right, and I have a PowerPoint, sorry if that's in your eyes there. So school uniform, as you know, this is my second year as principal at the George School. School uniforms wasn't something that was, you know, top on my priority coming in, but one of the first PTA meetings that we had at the school, we had a large group of parents, and when it was time for kind of questions and answers with the principal, the new principal, they wanted to know about school uniforms and how we could bring those to the George School. So I was very taken aback by that, that we had this strong showing of support for school uniforms at PTA. And last year, I promised the parents that, that we would do a school uniform survey and kind of gauge the support from our staff and our families and to see where we were at. So in School Improvement Council last year, we developed a survey, and we asked some questions, such as school uniforms reduce distractions and increase student focus in the classroom, school uniforms improve academics, and they had to rate, you know, strongly agree, agree. School uniforms improve student self-confidence, school uniforms improve school spirit and teamwork, implementing a school uniform policy would be financially beneficial for my family. And our last question was, I would support a school uniform policy at the George School. So we developed that survey last year and didn't quite get it finished in time, so we sent that out at the beginning of this school year. And here, I'm sorry, that's a little light, but here it is, broken up by question, and you can see strongly disagree is on the left, all the way over to strongly agree on the right. So we gathered that survey result, and a big thank you to our, to our office staff for tallying everything, and Ms. Zachary, who is our instructional resource specialist, she's here tonight, compiling all the data and putting that together for us. We brought the survey results back to School Improvement Council and also back to our PTA, and we really felt like there was a strong support for school uniforms at the George. So in our School Improvement Council, we decided that we would, you know, obviously, we had been talking to the Huntington and the Raymond, we talked a little bit more with them and find out, found out how they rolled it out, and we were going to do something very similar to what the Raymond did a couple of years ago. And what we're going to do is try an optional policy, what we're calling a transition year for next year, where uniforms would be highly encouraged but not required. And that would give us some time to gather more input and feedback from our families, from our staff, and really see if we do have the buy-in that our survey suggests. So we reached out to the same vendor that the Raymond School is using. We decided to go, our, our school color is blue, and we decided to go with the navy blue, very similar to the Huntington, because we wanted to be, wanted to pick a color that parents could buy anywhere. Kmart, Target, Walmart, wherever they want to go, we wanted to make it pretty standard and easily accessible. So it would be same thing as the, as the Huntington and the Raymond, a collared navy blue shirt with khaki pants, shorts or skirts, the girls with the tights, you know, white or navy tights. They can buy it anywhere. On physical education days, we'll also offer, you know, navy blue sweatpants or shorts and T-shirts on those physical education days. But the other part that we're really excited about is we are going to offer a full line of what we're calling spirit wear with our George School Jaguar logo on it, and families can shop right online for that. Let me see if it'll take us to the, I don't know if I want to go to the website yet. So families can shop right online. We're planning right now a fashion show at the end of the year. We'll have some students kind of modeling the different spirit wear combinations. We're going to invite our families to come to that. Then the vendor will come back during the school day, that last week of school. They'll have some clothing on hand that parents can purchase right there at the school, or they can just get the information to order online. But again, they don't have to order the school spirit wear through the website. They can just get navy collared shirts and khaki bottoms anywhere. And again, it's not mandatory, but just highly encouraged for the next school year. And that is our logo. So that will be on all of our shirts and on the, the girls' jumper and things like that. There'll also be a section on the website for, for parents and staff if they want to purchase things. There'll be a whole section of different spirit wear items, like backpacks and water bottles and things like that. And everything is really affordable. I can take you back to the website, but the price for a polo shirt is like $9 with our George School logo on it. So everything's, you know, very reasonable. So any questions you might have? Yes?
I just have a comment. I work in a school that has uniforms. One of the things that I've noticed is that it really levels the playing field for some students. We have a high homeless population, and when I find out some students in my school are homeless, I'm very surprised because they always have their uniform on. And going back to my days as a student, we could tell who was having economic hardships by the way that they dressed. So that's a really big piece for me when I see something like this come up. I'm very happy that you guys took the initiative for this. I've heard a lot from parents outside of the George School that really would like to have uniforms in other BPS schools, so it's nice to see this happening.
That was, a lot of the parents made those same statements to me. And the beginning of this school year, they, they were right out there on the front, front sidewalk, you know, Mrs. Poehl, what about school uniforms? First thing in the school year. So I'm excited to see, you know, what, what support we have for this going forward. Thank you. Yes?
I was actually contacted by some parents, however, that were not in support of this. One question I have, how many parents participated in your survey?
We had about 400 responses back.
You got 400?
Mm-hmm.
And how many students were in the school?
Oh, we have 891.
Okay, okay, because that was a question, really, how many people actually participated in the survey?
Mm-hmm.
To kind of judge, really, the accuracy of it.
Sure.
I like that you're saying you're doing a test here. I think that's kind of a fair way. Another concern that was addressed to me, so if a student cannot afford a uniform, some of our students, they might have hand-me-downs, they might get their clothing from other sources other than going to the store and purchasing them. What, how do we help them?
Well, I talked a little bit about Principal McGrath at the Raymond School as well, and I know that she works very closely with her PTA. They have clothing, clothing items at the school, and I know that they, you know, do support families that have a need. So we plan on doing that as well, and I've talked about it with our PTA. So we do that with families all the time that have any need, whether it's clothing, winter coat, shoes, backpacks. We get our families what they need. So we would work with our PTA to do that.
So there's not a particular number, you don't have really, like, a number of uniforms you give to children that maybe do received services or free reduced lunch, there's not really a certain number of uniforms they may receive?
I don't have any particular number in my, in my mind, but, you know, just thinking about the number of families that we support throughout the holiday season and things like that, you know, any family that expresses a need, we make sure that they're taken care of. So we would do the same with school uniforms.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I just want to say, I'm glad that you, you know, did the poll, because I think parent buy-in is key on this. I've, you know, this topic has come up in other schools there where there wasn't buy-in and they wanted no part of it. So that's probably the most important element of making this a success. But, and I applaud that you're already thinking of how you will address those that have an economic issue and with getting the uniforms. I know that I've gotten calls about that, you know, we talked about the Huntington has uniforms, and now that's in my warden. You know, I've reached out to the principal there, and we've been able to work things out. So I think, you know, to your concern, I've had those exact calls and worked with the principal and found a way to make it work, and, you know, I think we've always been able to get it done. But, so, anyway, that's my two cents.
Well, I just wanted to say, it was about a year and a half ago when Carolyn McGrath was first starting the uniforms at the Raymond, and she said, when the program started, it stopped all the bullying, the minor bullying and the major bullying at the school. It was, to me, I thought it was a perfect idea, that if all the kids looked the same, there is no, there is no we picking on each kid. It was a perfect idea. And I just wanted to applaud you because I think you and your school would be perfect for it, and I would support it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. We are excited to take a look at that. That was another thing that Principal McGrath had highlighted at one of our meetings this year, was the decrease in officer furls and suspension rates. So we're very interested in evaluating that as part of our data for this coming school year.
Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, why don't we take a vote to support the George School initiative in its current form? Someone make the, Mr. Sullivan, I'd love it if you'd make a motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we support the George School in its initiative to start with uniforms this particular year.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? There's always one. That's okay. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
And the website is on, hopefully you have it in your packet, so you can go on and take a look at the actual website. They're just starting to build it now, but you can get a sense of what's on there. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Also, on here tonight, we have the approval of our school committee's summer meeting dates. The two dates we have are Tuesday, July 11th, and Tuesday, August 15th.
I'm sorry? Okay, I don't have a calendar with me. We usually have one meeting each month.
So July 11th, we're good with July 11th, is that what it is? Okay, July 11th, all right. And you're not available August 15?
I'm away that week.
Okay, I mean, that's fine. Would people like to do it August 8th or August 22nd?
I'm away the 22nd.
All right, so why don't we do it August 8th? How's that? Good? Okay. Is that okay with you, Madam Superintendent? Okay. So we have July 11th and August 8th. That'll work. Can someone make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we have school committee meetings at the EHS Little Theater, July 11th and August 8th.
Someone second, please?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay.
And items to refer to subcommittee?
We have a follow-up to our policy subcommittee. It's our policy manual review subcommittee. So we need to set a date for that. And the other one that we'd like to set a date for is the superintendent contract, which is the review of the superintendent's evaluation and setting the goals, most importantly, as we go into the next school year. So during the summer months, those would be my recommendations. We did talk about a retreat, and we might be able to at least get that in during the retreat date that we came up with. So I'd like, I'll have Juan to reach out to you. We had talked about an evening, possibly instead of the Saturday, which we've done at other times, and we'll come up with some dates and do a poll to see what dates you're available. And preferably, I would think, earlier in July as opposed to later in July, if we can get that done.
Okay, great.
And the last thing I have, just to talk about a couple of things, and I know many of you will want to, because we've had so many wonderful things happening, so I'll just be very quick with this. Today, up at Brockton High School, this happens as soon as we graduate our students, our class of 2017. Today, what we did was honor our upcoming seniors, our class of 2018, and we gave out our book awards. Eleven of our students received book awards to Dartmouth College, to Harvard University, to BC, to...
to BC, to many wonderful colleges. So congratulations to every one of them. I also had the opportunity, it's really an event I look forward to each and every year, it's West Middle School Ladies Tea. And we do this for the seventh graders. Ladies, if you have an opportunity, I invite everybody to come to this. It talks about women and leadership and grace and doing all the things that women do so well. So we truly have a tea. The girls all get dressed up. There are some student speakers. Of course, the best speaker was a student that had graduated from West Junior High at the time, graduated in 2012 from Brockton High School. And so obviously, Mr. Gormly, is that, she mentioned you, actually.
In a speech?
She said, "Mr. Gormly." I thought it was your dad.
No, it was me.
She absolutely talked about Mr. Gormly. So that's, I'm sorry, her name is escaping.
Cheyenne Mendez.
That's exactly who it was. And it was just, and the kids loved it. And they love it when somebody young comes and talks their language. You could hear a pin drop, and it was just a wonderful event. Thank you to our teachers at West Middle School. Principal Murray is in the audience, and it was a great event. Also, and I'll let all of you talk about the graduation, just a terrific day. We somehow escaped the rain. And from our student speakers to our graduates, you look out on that field, it is a dignified, beautiful event for family, for friends. It is just, again, the highlight of the year. And I thank Principal Wolder and all her staff for putting that together for all of us to be proud of our high school, Brockton High School. And our alternative schools were represented, Frederick Douglass, the Champion High School, the Goddard School, and we're very proud of all of our graduates totaling over 1,000. We also had our big event, Brockton Kids Count Save Our Schools, the Tuesday after Memorial Day. Very well attended. I want to thank all the parents that came out, all our staff, our supporters, and we will be talking advocacy as we go forward, and certainly it'll be part of my presentation at the city council meeting on Friday evening. Kennedy Commemoration Day, we had all of our elected officials there. Our state delegation was there, Senator Brady was there. It was a beautiful day, Friday. All the families come out and, again, continue to support our children who just performed wonderfully. Thank you to Principal Brian Rogan and all his staff. And I'm going to finish with a happy birthday to our executive director, June Saber McGuire. So please join me in wishing her a one, and I'm so pleased she's at the school committee meeting this evening.
Happy birthday.
You are.
Forever 39.
That's right. And that's it.
Anyone else?
Unfinished business, nothing? New business? I can, I can report in on the policy meeting we had on June 1st. The committee of a whole met on June 1st to review the policy manual as well as the handbooks at the different levels throughout the district. With respect to the policy manual, we had a presentation from Dr. Terrasi with input from our intern, Melissa Costello. They did a wonderful job of going through the handbook. I think Dr. Kinsell also contributed to that as well. And at that, at the first part, half of the meeting, we basically went over the caregiver authorization form, and we did adopt a change to page one of that form. We then went on to review the handbooks, and Mr. Thomas made some recommendations with the input of, I think, everyone in the room as well as the school committee with regard to some of the dress code policies. That was, I could tell you, a very interesting conversation with regard to some of the items. But we, we came up with what we believe are some common sense changes to some of the dress codes at the middle school level. So I would say that is a summary of what went on that evening. Joyce, you're looking at me strange. You, you weren't at that meeting, so that's why you're like, yeah, so, okay.
I'm over here.
Oh, all right. So that is, in a nutshell, yeah, that is, in a nutshell, what took place that evening. So can I have someone make a motion to approve the report of policy that evening?
Motion to approve the report of the policy subcommittee meeting.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Then I think we need to just make a specific motion to adopt the change to the caregiver authorization with regard to the recommendations to page one as presented by Dr. Terrasi. Can I have a motion on that?
Motion to adopt the changes to the caregiver authorization, page one, as recommended by Dr. Terrasi.
Okay. Second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Mr. Gormly giving me the smirk. And then, and then with regard to the dress code, Mr. Thomas, do we need to adopt the dress code change?
No, we just have to approve the changes.
Okay. So, all right. Very good. So we, again, there was further discussion with regard to some changes to the dress code as incorporated into the handbook. Did we make, yeah, we did make a change to the BHS dress code as well. So, all right. So a motion to adopt the middle school and BHS dress code changes as presented at the policy subcommittee meeting?
Motion to adopt dress code changes?
Thank you.
Middle school and high school.
Perfect. Seconded. Mr. Sullivan seconded. Any further discussion?
I'm not, we haven't seen them reprinted correctly. There was just so much talk. I'm not quite as sure.
They're in our packets. All in favor? Opposed? Are you opposed?
I think I will abstain.
Okay. And one abstention. Oh, two abstentions. Okay. Two abstentions. All right. Very good. Two abstentions. Five in favor? Good? Yes, you got, you adopt.
Adopt just the middle and the high school, the changes, but all of the other.
Oh, it needs to be the entire handbook?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. All right. So can we amend that motion then to include the changes to the entire handbook at the, at the high school level and the middle school level?
And all of the.
All of them. All of the alternative schools, all of the handbooks.
Okay. Okay.
So we amend the motion to say we adopt the changes to the middle school and high school yearbooks?
All of the handbooks, district-wide handbooks.
And all the handbooks we're accepting.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification for myself. We're adopting them all, as well as the changes we discussed would be at the elementary level, but I mean, this is everything.
Correct.
Great. There were some changes that were made when the attorney reviews them each year and changes the updates to the law, some of the wording. And we looked particularly at some of the dress code concerns that you had brought up.
Right, right.
So, but the overall handbooks for all of the district, from, again, from our elementary all the way through every one of our alternative schools, middle, high school, all the district handbooks.
Could you second that, Mr. Sullivan? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? You had more discussion?
I just want to say, I want to clarify the three of the statements because I did think we were going to have more conversation about the handbooks. So that's why I'm staying.
Thank you for clarification. All in favor? Mr. DiAgostino, next. Go ahead.
Just real quick, for those who maybe have some more concerns, when will the handbooks go into print? Do we have a ballpark of when that?
Right after July 1st.
Okay. So if there were those who wanted to present other changes or have any other discussion, there is still time if, if something had to be, something was found that the committee felt strongly about correcting.
I would be open to the next meeting.
Okay.
So the next meeting is June 20th.
One more meeting that, right. And I, for those that are abstaining for various reasons, I just wanted to see if they had another opportunity to present whatever concerns they might have before it goes to print, because obviously, once it goes to print, I mean, we're, it's, that's it. So, okay.
And it's important that we have that for the first day of school.
Absolutely.
It's the translations that I need to.
Yeah. Okay.
If we could get it done tonight, because I could just jump on the translations, but it makes it work if we have, if we have to get it done.
I just mean if they wanted to bring something up at another meeting. I'm not saying that we shouldn't take the vote tonight, but for the two of them, if they saw something that was, they really felt strongly needed to be discussed, there is another meeting at which they could have us take that issue under advisement. That's, I was just looking for a timeline, that's all.
We could stop working on the translations and if we had some minor changes on the 20th, we could work with that.
Okay. All right. I was just curious. Anyone else?
Clarifications, since I wasn't able to attend the meeting, I was just curious. Middle school, I thought ripped jeans were not allowed at all currently at the middle school, but now we're going backwards, a lot of them?
Ripped jeans were allowed at the middle school, I believe. They had to wear something under it if, that was how it previously had been.
Because my thing is, I mean, high school, they can't, but we're allowed, I mean, they're going to transition into the high school identity. Why not just make, these should mirror each other pretty much.
Well, that's exactly.
That's what we did. Yeah. That's what we did. They're going to, they, ripped jeans are only allowed if there's something underneath them.
Think, what was it, above the knee?
Above the knee.
Above the knee.
Yeah.
But that's exactly what we did. We took a look at the language at the high school. We made similar changes to the language at the middle schools. We added something about the strap would be two inches. So we, and that was, again, for both middle and high school. That's exactly what we did.
Because number six on the handbook for middle school does not mirror the high school. High school, no ripped jeans.
Right. The change hasn't been made yet.
Well, I'm only looking at what was provided in my packet, so I apologize, but.
I'll make sure they're the same.
All right.
I thought the packet Friday had all of the changes. The language.
I thought I did, too. Maybe I didn't look at it closely enough.
All right. Well, there's one more meeting that you can take another perusal, and then if there's something that needs to be rectified, amended, or changed, we can do that on the 20th. Okay?
Does the handbook policy enable?
No.
My god.
I just wondered if you had scheduled that meeting.
For Christ's sake.
No, absolutely not. Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, Mr. Sullivan?
Just one item, if I could.
Sure.
Just wanted to briefly talk about.
Well, we have a motion on it. We still have our motion on the table. Can we finish this motion, and then we can talk about the graduation?
Yeah.
Okay. So is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay. And two abstentions, correct? Okay. Mr. Sullivan, the floor is yours on the graduation.
I just wanted to talk briefly on the graduation. Everybody here was there Saturday. But the way it went was so fine-tuned. I wanted to take my hats off to the superintendent, the deputy superintendent, all the girls that handed out the diplomas, the security. Everything seemed to be A1. Everything moved like a clock. It was perfect. I don't know how you held out the rain, but you did.
Well, I'd like to take credit for the rain, but credit for what happened certainly is Principal Sharon Wolder and her staff. Deputy Mike Thomas is there with our facility staff, so they, I concur with you, Mr. Sullivan.
It just moved around like a clock. It was unbelievable.
I thought it was an excellent day. I was very impressed with it. But it was a lot of hard work.
Oh, it was.
As you said, it's a lot of.
It was a lot of hard work and well done by everybody. Thank you.
I concur. Good job. Mr. DiAgostino?
Again, also on the graduation, I mean, every detail was perfect, and, and the students were manning a lot of the responsibilities, you know, and to see them just, I mean, literally, I can't think of anything that didn't go like clockwork, absolute perfection. It was, it was, it was great. And also, congratulations, of course, to all of the graduates. I have to say, you know, nights like tonight where we go to that awards ceremony and absolutely on graduation day, being able to hand out diplomas and shake hands of, of our seniors and, you know, commend them for, you know, their, all their hard work is, has to be absolutely my favorite part of being on this committee is, is to be able to have that opportunity to, to, you know, express congratulations for, for all that they've done and kind of, you know, honor their work for, that they've put in. So.
Ms. Plant?
I'd like to say I had parents with graduates in other towns ask how we do it, in the amount of time we do it. And because we're not sitting there for, you know, hours and hours, it's, it's reasonable. Our students' behavior was excellent. I was, lots of smiles, great handshakes, hugs even. I just, we had such great students there, big smiles, so polite, so respectful, and I would like to congratulate Ms. Wolder for, for that as well.
Yep. Our student speakers were wonderful. I thought, I thought the speech was excellent. I certainly thought the opening chorus was phenomenal as well. The, the music was excellent.
And they loved it, the students.
The students loved it. The music was excellent. And the style of music was wonderful, you know? So just a class, just a class graduation.
Bridgestow.
Class act, yeah. Wonderful. Congratulations to all those students. I think, believe it or not, a lot of them are going to miss Brockton High, you know? But like the mayor said, it's the first chapter in their life, and, you know, onward and upwards. They have so much to look forward to, and we certainly congratulate them all and, and all of the staff throughout the district, you know, at elementary, middle, you know, in high school, who built the foundation for them to reach, you know, the pinnacle of graduation and, you know? It's just a wonderful time.
There's that little award winner in the audience you wanted to mention.
Oh, yes, I do want to mention that we have an award winner with us, and she's sitting in the second row over there. One of our students, Ms. Plant's daughter, Kylie, right?
That's right.
Yeah.